Favor.
Aye.
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Except for part of it?
No.
Yeah.
I think it's not P one lot thirteen, is that right?
Yeah.
One twenty-five E sure.
One twenty-seven.
Oh, one twenty-seven.
When? I take a little wait. It's not today? No, one twenty-seven.
Map forty-five lot twenty-two?
Dash six.
No, it's, uh... I think the slide is right, I think it's the dash six.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, dash six.
Forty-five twenty-two dash six.
What about it?
We're gonna hold off on that one this week.
Hold off, okay.
Check the map.
I'll change.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public input, do we have anybody online?
No. There is no one.
Oh, that's right, because there's no one. So they didn't fix that, we just don't have internet.
Correct, so they're still gonna be recording it, but there won't be livestream. Unless it comes back on and they join in.
Stratton Free Public, I mean Free Library Trustees, twenty twenty-three budget, welcome.
So as the board is familiar, the library, both library trustees kind of submit something that looks a little different than most of the other department requests, so that spreadsheet is on page fifty-one as the Stratton request.
Are they on the fuel oil bid for the town?
Yes, I believe so, yep.
What's our, what's our pricing?
Three ninety.
They calculate, one of them calculated five eighty.
Right, that's what I saw, so.
Five eighty a gallon? Yeah, I think that might have been. Yeah.
Oh. We are to be adjusted.
Yes.
Might make it up on the electricity.
You want to highlight any of the major changes from last year, or?
Well, I think mainly the repairs that Mike has been pointing out that we really shouldn't kind of take this coming here added about four thousand dollars to our facilities and equipment lines. Of course, the increase in the electricity and fuel, and then really the only other notable item would be that we're looking to add a clerk position for probably about ten hours.
Is that going to be within the existing library hours, or is that anticipated to add open hours?
No, the same now.
Just within the same, just, I know you only have one person over there, a good amount, right?
Yes, and we hope this year to be implementing the software that we've been planning on for several years. A lot of work to get that on board and someone else there checking out the plans while the librarians are working on that project.
Just the cataloging, cataloging software?
The other would be the expendable trust of five thousand dollars to the point of brickwork, the money that's been in the expendable trust number, planning to be spending on this catalog.
Saving up for some.
So is the request seventy?
Yes.
And so the bulk of that is the maintenance repairs and then the additional staffing?
Right, and the electric. We tried to print what we could elsewhere.
Yep, that's correct.
Usually print skin hide it.
What would be the anticipated improvements or programs that you could be involved in by adding the assistant position?
Well, the clerk position?
Yeah.
It's more, um... I think really what it's more, gonna help with a lot more is if one of us is ill, there's no one else to, at least one librarian to do everything. So that's our hope, to have that. And then while we're, if we did have someone else, it'd be great, we would have another person who could maybe do storytimes or do some kind of, you know, other adult type programming or something, so we would have somebody who could man the desk while the other librarian is running the program. Where we don't really have that now, can't really run a program and cover the desk, so we really don't offer a whole lot to, outside of just using the library itself for the typical things. So it would be nice to be able to offer more, more program type things, if we had a third person who could cover occasionally. That would be my hope.
Are there additional children's programs you'd be able to implement?
I'd be able to have a children's program.
Sorry?
I'd be able to have children's programs.
Sure.
Really, I only have a little bit in the summer.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't really have any, unless I put in extra hours myself to cover on the day, on the day off, so. So yes, and I could, I think maybe hold something on a regular basis would be lovely.
Sure. It was one of the justifications that Mount Caesar used in their programming last year. It seemed from their approach that they were successful in having additional utilization, especially by children, in the summer reading program. So it'd be helpful to know that, that while it gives you some relief at the same time, it'd be an opportunity to increase utilization.
Which I would love, I would love to increase. I would rather be super busy than, you know.
Sure.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Can I mention something? I think safety is a big factor, having a second person in there at all times, safety is a very big factor.
Yeah, I agree with you. All set? Slide all set? What do they need from us?
All set, works. All set, works.
Consensus all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Put the work in for it, come again.
Thank you.
Do I have to do it? In my haste. Maybe I should, maybe I should do a statement. Mount Caesar, welcome.
Aye.
How are you doing? Would you be able to provide an overview of, and an understanding of, it would be helpful to have a better understanding of the payroll increases, which are rather substantial, I'm not saying not justified, but it would be helpful to expand on that.
Yeah, we wanted, we feel the staff adjusted for inflation, I think, is making less than she did when she started, fifteen, eighteen?
Seventeen.
So we're trying to play catch-up, I know it's a big request increase, but what we've got in here is a ten percent raise, so the other librarians are at fifteen dollars forty-five cents, the assistant librarians. So we've budgeted with this request the ten percent increase.
Yeah, I was curious, because I had come out with a little bit different numbers, but I came out a little bit higher on the assistants, but it could have just been my interpretation of how this was listed. But, so you're at fifteen and change now, and that's gonna go to seventeen?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, the other would be twenty-seven roughly per hour?
Uh, yeah, I guess it's per hour, salary down.
Just rough, I guess. How does that play in with our staff program? I know they're not part of it, but just as a comparable. I'm not, you're not gonna give me an answer now, but if you could look into that.
Sure. Thank you.
Truly is like one point, three percent increase, if you factor in the cost of living, that keeps them even, and then you factor in what you're giving beyond that, because if we're not giving them just the cost of living, which is, they're coming out eight point seven, we're not giving that, so I guess it's one point three we're really giving as an increase, because otherwise it'd be going backwards, which is what's been happening all these years, it's going backwards instead of forward.
The only reason I asked Michael was just to have a comparable.
Yeah.
You might be considerably lower than someone in a similar position based on the step.
Well, we could ask for more if you want us to.
Well, we, I don't think anybody would have a problem with asking for more, but just as an understanding of where it came from, and then you've got five and four percent projected for next year, and, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
I did, yeah, of course.
And we understand that this subject is a change.
Yeah, I appreciate Richard doing the longer term mapping, because that was something I think was very helpful last year as well, so appreciate him. Trust me, he's doing that again.
Is there anything else that?
Well, I put in, using Michael's letter from September, I think, you know, the large expected increase in electricity costs, seventy percent, I used. I'm not sure about whether we're on the town, town's oil deal.
Yeah, so they have been, when Richard Scaramelli was their treasurer, of course, he's one of our trustees and trustees, and we got them on, and we just want to verify that they should be.
Yeah.
So if that's true, and if it's three ninety or something, there's probably sixteen hundred bucks of, but I used forty percent.
Other programming?
Yeah. But I used forty percent.
Are there any line items that you're concerned about based on this year's experience?
No, but, you know, I sort of believe in the cyclical theory of maintenance, so a year ago when you're doing stuff with our furnace and chimney, this year not, not so much. Whether something happens next year, I mean, there is the expendable trust, I guess we would lean on if operations could fund sort of semi-routine maintenance.
The reason I was asking was it just seemed like, for example, community programs, you're projecting to almost double what your budget was?
Yeah.
And, and so obviously you're holding that for this year, but is that a real, a real, or is that more likely that you're gonna be under, under budget?
Nope. Well, I agreed in the fall, that after a successful summer program for kids, this woman, I guess it is, comes in every month, and most of that is to run that all year.
Music and movement for preschoolers?
Good.
And she was so successful, we got the Carpenter Home Daycare came, and they were thrilled, and they've been coming every month.
Great.
So we thought, let's do it every month, instead of just the three times we had money for.
So that's really the genesis of my questions, they knew we're, basically doubled what your line item was, it's been successful, you're, you're projecting next year to be in line with what your actual is for this year.
Right.
Is that a real number, or do you anticipate that that number could actually go up? Because you're, you're basically at twenty-two hundred for twenty-one, twenty-two hundred, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-two hundred for twenty-two, twenty-two hundred for twenty-three, so do you think that twenty-two hundred is gonna hold, or do you think that it's gonna increase? I'm only asking because it jumped so much this year.
I understand. Well, we, we did this program virtually the whole year this year, it wasn't budgeted for that, but I felt we had enough that we could continue the summer thing through the fall, so I've annualized that. I think it's gonna be close, but I think we can do it.
There is a little bit of a chicken and egg thing, if we, if we, if we build it and they come, we might have to build more because more are coming, I mean, so if, if these things that we've begun increase, that if the attendance continues to increase, and we have to have more, more book clubs and more student groups.
And that's really all I'm asking, will you, because you're way over budget this year, will you have that potential for next year, and should you be considering that, or have you already considered?
Certainly, our youth, our youth librarian has, she's, she's very good at finding ways, inexpensive way to do things, but she's very active, and she's, she's more than paid her way, I mean, she's incredible with the difference that it's made just having her there to do that. And it's, and when we get the floors reinforced, which we hope is before spring, we'll be back to movie nights and everything like that upstairs, so. I, that funds itself, because we ask for donations, and that kind of funds itself doing that, but we haven't been able to do that since we've been told we can't have more than about fifteen people upstairs, so that's curtailed that one.
Anybody else have any questions?
I see there's activity next door on the construction, do you want to just?
Yes, finally.
Run that, or mention how that's going, or?
It's, it's probably gonna be a few more weeks, because everything's in little steps that they're, that they're doing it, but, and we just are waiting for a bid that comes in on, when they're putting in the floors, we've already got those bids, but they want to do the, the HVAC and the lights inside all at the same time, because they don't want to have to pull the floors up a second time to do it. So we're just waiting for the mechanical engineer to give his equipment list, so we can go, we told them that we don't want to close in the summer, because that's really a. Busy. A pivotal time for us, and that we need that in the spring, and so we're pushing them like crazy to go ahead and do that, so that's our next phase that's coming in.
Can you describe what's going on now?
Yeah, right now they're working on the ramp, we're meeting tomorrow morning with the people that are doing the doors, the automatic doors, they're giving us various options for how you can make automatic doors, and, and we had an issue about the granite steps, which we've taken down to Keen Monument, and they're gonna make them into benches that are gonna be in memory of a couple of people, and.
We have someone paying for that, someone's donating the money to make those.
So we're moving, slowly but surely we're getting there.
Great.
Looks good. Well, thank you. Appreciate all the work that you do, thanks, Richard, for putting this together.
Well, thank you. Good question.
Thank you all.
Any reason we can't go to any productions?
I thought they were planning to be here, unless now I've realized unless they're planning to be on Zoom, which.
We should do it.
I think, I thought when they spoke to John, they said it would probably be good to be there in person, but we can start it, and they probably shouldn't have planned to watch in at six oh five, or if they were on one-on-one, maybe they ran into a garden tree or something, so.
So basically, what they're doing is, is asking to give up the Sunday and move for a shorter timeframe to Thursday.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess the question is whether we believe there needs to be a public hearing on it?
Correct.
Or whether we can just authorize the change?
Correct.
Ready to thoughts?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If they give up Sunday and just moving it forward, that would be a problem. Well, move, yeah, move it back to Thursday, and that's move-in day.
Correct.
And they want to have some kind of entertainment for the people that are there.
Correct.
So it won't be the full-blown, but.
Correct.
It's just.
Lower, slower.
So it's less of what we already approved, correct?
Significantly lower hour, less hours.
Right. Unless attendance on the first day than there would be on Sunday.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh. Speaking of that.
Well, I have respect for the fact that you made the trip, we'll give you the opportunity to say hello, but I think we've already made our decision.
But you're winning, so you can probably screw it up.
You're probably best off then.
Well, we like that.
Do we need anything besides consensus or motion?
The motion, which I give Beverly a corrected version, so I had a little.
Permit, the permit for event twenty twenty-three oh one to change the dates to June fifteenth, five PM to nine PM, June sixteenth, ten AM to eleven PM, and June seventeenth, ten AM to eleven PM.
Make that motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like to speak to your project? We have one minute, I think. We have three minutes.
Just to say thank you for the, the last minute tweet, and that'll be, that'll be good for our attendees and their level of enjoyment, the game board, all that, which we're an oversight on our part to fix one problem and create another one for ourselves, so.
Yeah, and I think the Sunday night for some folks was a little bit of a sore subject, so you're now eliminating that, so I think it's, it is a weeknight, but it's, you know, done by nine, so.
Yeah, and it's a much different sound situation.
Yeah.
It's much smaller, so all around, I think, it's more. Maybe like a fifteen percent. Yeah, it would be the system duties going like this, so it's, it's better.
If you're not.
We agree.
That's fair. So I guess that's it for now, and we'll tackle the next thing, next thing that comes along.
Yeah, sounds good.
The internet's down, so you couldn't have zoomed in anyway, so.
Perfect. We're happy to come out, that's totally fine. No worries. Yeah.
It's nice to see you.
You as well, we appreciate everything, you always like working. Well, thanks for everything, we'll be in touch about the next one.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good one. Thank you very much.
Is there one else we can do?
I can mention briefly, so you'll see on the spreadsheet in front of you, which is the new printout and the new financial software, so I'll be able to email it out, I know it's a little tough to see, but hopefully you can get kind of the general, general ideas, and just kind of the overall format is it shows the line items, and then these larger columns, or larger rows below are footnotes, so right now this is just the department request, I still gotta sit down with a few more departments to get some of the numbers fine-tuned a little bit, but if you kind of look down at some of the footnotes, it gives you a little bit of additional detail, which hopefully will, again, kind of answer some questions before you have them, or, you know, if you're thinking, okay, Swansea uncovered, it's got six thousand dollars, what is that based on? We tried to, tried to add in some detail, so hopefully you'll find it helpful, I can email it out, which will be easier for you to view, obviously, as well, but it's just kind of a snapshot, we'll be getting more into the budget next week.
So, just so I understand, the, the last line item, full-time salaries?
Yep.
Administrator coordinator, what's the coordinator? Is that Edlin?
HR coordinator. Yeah, so what I did is I put positions.
Explode her up.
Yeah, so she's half to this line item, half to general assistance. So I put the position and any initials when there is an encompass.
Is there, is there any line item that shows each of those positions as a total?
Not in this, but we can, so we have different spreadsheet, which is our kind of payroll detail, that shows the breakdown of the positions, there's not too many, they're split multiple places, but we can get you that too, if that's helpful.
And then, what are the highlights? I know this is black and white, but what would the highlights be, are they colored? Like, in the top portion, there's some that are highlighted, some that are not.
That's just in every other, to make it a little bit easier to look across, just every other line item, and if you want it darker, or you want that off, I can do that too, I don't know if I can add in the lines, it's just to try to make it a little easier if you look over, or trying to follow across the, across the road.
Certainly helps me. But it sure helps me.
Yeah, look, you know, the slide has about an email version, and that's much, much easier to, what I'm trying to avoid is if I exported it to Excel, then A, you lose the headings on each page, and it takes a good amount of formatting to fit it on one page, so that's just how it prints out direct, so it's about as big as I can get it without decreasing some of the columns, hopefully it's fairly legible, so the email version will be better too, which you'll get before the meetings.
Any questions? Being that it's six o'clock on somebody's clock? On somebody else's? We have a public hearing in accordance with warrant article fourteen, which was passed at two thousand and four annual town meeting, and RSA forty-one colon fourteen dash A, the Board of Selectmen during their regularly scheduled meetings will hold the following public hearings at Whitcomb Hall, which is Seventeen Main Street, regarding the proposed acquisition by the town of tract two identified in the deed for thirty-eight Sylvan Way, which is map thirty-seventh lot twenty, this is a proposed donation from the owner of thirty-eight Sylvan Way, Nicholas Lenig. The hearings will be held as follows, on November thirtieth, tonight, at six PM, and then a follow-up on December fourteenth, at six PM, and then the decisions on the twenty-first, if I recall.
Yes.
Public hearing is open, want to explain? Michael, it seems pretty explanatory from what I'm packing.
Yeah, it's a little, little unique, but basically, the simplest version is, you know, someone would like to donate us the land under a portion of the road, which is generally, you know, preferable to own the land under the road, this one has the added benefit that it's partly being, or what brought it about, was the folks at the lot on this property are interested in tying into the sewer, and based on the, where the line, existing line is in easement, they could either go further across their property this way, or they could come down and tie it this way, and Mr. Lenig would prefer to donate this lot to the town versus granting an easement, so that's somewhat separate, that's what is kind of prompting it, but, you know, the town would own this land fee simple, which anytime you can own the land under the road is better than just having the right of way, generally.
Makes sense. Did they already have a sewer main there?
Yes, the only, yeah, the only sewer complication was the getting it there, basically, so yeah, Scott's pretty familiar with it, and it'll go before the planning board at their next meeting, with their comment as well, so he can make sure his input is on the record there.
Is there any impact from a zoning perspective, reducing the size of a non-conforming lot?
I don't think so, no.
So right now that's paved all the way through?
To the, uh... The end, where the manhole is, which I think is what he's donating, right? Because it goes through the fence, and then there's his driveway and our jugging, or hammer head for the turnaround, which we've already approved. That's an easement.
Uh, so that easement is kind of a longer story, but didn't actually, yeah.
Okay.
We thought we might create more water issues for him if we had done what we had initially pitched, which is why we actually have this nice survey, so we'll talk about that after, but, so that, yeah, the easement didn't ultimately get approved, but you're correct about the pavement.
Kind of ends at the.
Yes.
Fence line.
Yes, pretty much.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have comments?
Do you guys want to speak to it at all, or?
Um, yeah, we were.
Just need to identify yourselves for the.
I'm Brad Chesley, I'm the owner of that, the property and also the accessory dwelling. Obviously, you.
Which property?
Twenty-one Sylvan Way.
Is that, are you the one seeking to connect to?
We are, yeah, we paid for the town to do their title search, and, yeah, we're gonna benefit off of that, because we have that accessory dwelling, which is going to tie into that, that existing septic.
Sewer.
Sewer. Sewer line, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, our neighbor isn't interested in, and he seems afraid of adding easements, and he doesn't seem to understand, he thinks we're somehow going to take away from his sewer, so we've been trying to get an easement from him since April, so that we don't have to run our sewer all the way up to the house that our daughter lives in, because that, we've got an estimate of about ten thousand dollars for that.
And just to add, I know that you were seeking an easement from that gentleman for a turnaround, we would also entertain that if that's gonna be a problem when you guys go to plow it.
We're not making it good now.
No, we're plowing, we're back.
So we're trying to make this happen. We are making, that's what I thought, so, so it's not gonna change that responsibility, it's just be easy enough, we give us the opportunity for the hammerhead, that's a separation, right now we're talking about, maybe we don't need to.
All right, I think it's win-win for everybody.
Yep.
Anyone else? Would you care to say, we'll have another shot at it in two weeks, if you're.
My phone explains it.
Somewhat clunky, but we're making progress finally, so.
All set?
All set.
So we'll close this public hearing.
Should we close it, or do we continue?
We close this one. We close this one.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thanks for coming in. You came in just in time. Richard Lane, Lanefield Improvements. Welcome, Richard. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. May I, if I could, do you?
Sure.
Just any help? Finding what I'm trying to do. What I wanted to post in here. spell coded. The orange part on that is the 220-foot arc from home plate, with which the Kelruck and, uh, organization wanted to include it because they wanted to be compliant with their national organization. The black is the permanent fence along left and right field, uh, lines controlling access to the ball field, by the blue. Uh, the red dotted is the temporary fence line that's going to be between West Field and O'Brien Field. This is what is, uh, currently being proposed. The ball fields will be thus secured because the issue of safety has been, uh, has been raised a heap of time with the use of the fence line at the 220-foot arc and the fence along the parking pathway. Therefore, uh, the need for any terminal fencing in the outfield beyond the arcs of each ball field is really, uh, non-existent, you know, the need for it is nonexistent. The arc is going to be a fence. That would be a home run fence for both fields. By eliminating the permanent fence in the outfield, the town would, will maintain a more flexible position for future recreational use of the land. Are there any questions as to what I'm, what I'm trying to convey?
So your orange line is a temporary fence.
The 228, the home run. Yes, the orange line is there, 220-foot.
Want to get your good side?
There isn't. Part of the way. Yeah, the, both orange lines bars are 220 feet out from home plate. And, uh, this is what was requested and what, why they moved and redesigned the fields so that they would be able to have, uh, a compliant situation, a home run over that fence line. A temporary, this is all temporary fencing.
Yeah.
Okay, and as I say, the blue line is going to be permanent fence that's being moved to the pathway and access, uh, points on either side of, of the, uh, of like mill and putt drive. At the meeting of the left field line of O'Brien and the right field line of West Field, just beyond the dugouts, they're, I believe they're planning to put in a permanent fence there with a gate. The dotted line going out then is a temporary fence, which would restrict any ball going from one field into the other. And this is what they want. And at the very top, there's a dotted red line. And that would be a content, you know, a continuation of the temporary fence from the orange, uh, you know, from left to, to right. The, therefore, the need for that permanent fence is nonexistent. You have restricted access to the ball, both ball fields with this temporary fencing and the permanent fencing at the base. And all I'm asking for is a reconsideration and of why we would need to have permanent fence out there. Without it, you have a much less maintenance problem, uh, for the town. Look perplexed, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I, I, I lost you a while back.
Okay, whereabouts?
Well, I, I thought part of the orange was permanent fencing and part of it was temporary. So if it's all temporary, then I, I've completely lost. Cause the, the, the permanent is a safety factor, if I understand correctly. And that's the blue.
The blue, okay, that, along the baseline, that is, that's existing.
Yeah, and that's permanent.
That's permanent. That's going to be permanent. And that, then it has two gates in there for access to the field itself. And that, that would restrict, uh, pedestrian, uh, access. So it would, you know, you'd only have access for the teens, et cetera. The temporary fencing, the orange to the outfield, et cetera, encloses those fields. So that restricts access from any, any other location. I mean, if somebody wanted to walk up and around the hill and try to come back onto the field, they would not be able to do that because of temporary fencing. That would serve the same purpose as a permanent fence, but a much less, uh, expense. And would give more flexibility for future recreational use if things had changed. Say if we developed a, uh, lacrosse organization or something like that that wanted to use these fields.
So where, where I'm missing it is if the orange is temporary fencing.
Yes, sir.
What is it? That, is it the red? That's, that's a concern or?
No, um.
I think the, the last plan was for permanent fence all the way around, except for that 60 feet or?
140 was going to be a hundred.
The opening?
Yeah, for the sliding hill.
And I think if I remember right, Mr. Oden said that they wanted to go permanent because of the longevity factor and the cost. It was actually going to be cheaper in the long run to do with permanent fence and just have that small area for the sledding be temporary.
Then.
And for the soccer, I would say.
Yeah. There is.
So just so you understand, Richard, that's where I'm getting confused. Because I thought part of the orange, part of what you've outlined in orange was permanent.
No, that is, all the orange is temporary fencing. That is, that is that 220-foot arc from home plate, which is the home run fence that they would be putting up.
Okay, so, so if it's temporary, it's different than what we thought it was, but that's not needed here nor there for my question.
Okay.
If it's temporary, aren't you asking for it to be temporary?
Yeah, I'm, I want, I'm asking the, the board to reconsider the actual need for a permanent fence going around the outer portions of O'Brien and West Field. The root, because once you put that.
But where is it permanent? Cause your.
This line here was the proposed. Yeah, this, this here, this, all this is permanent.
Oh, I thought, isn't that the, what you got outlined in orange?
No.
It's just inside of it.
It's inside.
So they have a temporary fence and a permanent fence?
Yeah, that's, yeah, this, this arc here, this is a 220-foot arc.
Yeah.
From home plate. And on both fields. Okay, and they're going to have a fence there.
Yeah.
Put out temporary fencing because that's going to be their home run fence. That has, but it's going to be harder for the requirements for.
Okay, so they've got the home run fence and then outside of that is a regular fence.
Yes, which I, I find that is redundant and is actually, uh, detrimental to any potential change of use for the fields in that area. Now, like, you know, as I said, if you understand the, the, along the pathway, the permanent fence, et cetera. Because you want to keep cars or people or whatever from going in.
Right.
Just letting someone who wanted to participate know that our internet is down. They're just calling to find out why they can't see the meeting.
Let me, Mike. I mean, I, I have no, no issue with the layout of the, of the soccer fields, et cetera. You know, as long as the, uh, directive recreation is satisfied with it. You know, finally, sorry, is that, you know, the construction of that permanent fence in the outfield beyond what would be the home run fence already out there.
So my other, I don't know about this temporary fence, but the, the other piece of it was that we, first of all, it's not proposed, it's been approved. So it, it's not a proposal at this point. The, the planning board gave their recommendations, the, the select board supported it. So it, it isn't proposed. That this would be a, you're, you're asking for a change to, to what was presented.
Right, and what you, what you accepted.
What we accepted.
Yeah, I, I take it upon myself for not recognizing when this was initially put forward, that, that was, that 220-foot arc is going to be a fence.
The challenge I personally would have is that, well, first of all, I didn't know about a temporary fence, so I don't know why they got it, but they, they must have some reasoning for it. But the other part was a compromise that we had worked on collaboratively. And that the Swansea Kelruck and with Chad, Chad Brandon had, had come up with this new design that allowed for temporary fence, what we thought was temporary fence, to be taken down after the season and put back up during the season. So we've already, we, we, they've done what we asked them to do. So it would be challenging for me to now say that, whoops, we made a mistake and we want you to rethink it. Because as, as Sly said, they were very passionate with regard to the need for permanent fencing.
There, I believe if memory serves, that the initial, the initial presentation was, as you say, was for a permanent fence, keep the dogs out. Um, nothing was said at that point about safety. And things have kind of changed along the way. All, yeah, all I'm asking is whether or not we should re, you know, the board of selectmen should reconsider the actual need of having a permanent fence on that property in that area. Because you are, you will have a temporary fence all the way around and in between the two fields that are going to secure that area for safety or whatever other issue you might have. And if you redo, if you eliminate that temper, that, uh, permanent fence, you allow for the area to be potentially used for a different recreational item down the road. But once you, once you put up that permanent fence, you've restricted, pretty much restricted the use that can be, uh, adapted for in there. Have you seen the home run fence? I'm kind of visualizing that it's not much. I think it's two or three feet. No, it's, it's four and, I believe it's four and a half feet. Cause I think they have to get over it to get the ball, right? Pardon me? But I think they jump over it to get the ball when there's a home run. Yeah, it is. If, if you don't have somebody out there from the team that will shag for it, but, yeah. So, but as I say, it secures the area.
The, the, no, I, I just, what I'm, what I'm getting to is just, we, this is an agreement that we made with Swansea Kelruck. And, and other than this temporary fence going all the way around the facility, which I wasn't aware they were going to do, it seems like they've accomplished what we asked them to do. They, they were passionate about the need for the permanent fencing. We wanted relief for sledding during the winter. Uh, that seemed to be supported by the majority of people who were here. And we, we charged them with, with moving forward to do that. We have permanent fencing throughout the facility as, as it currently exists. And if, if other programming were to, were to come into fruition that, that could utilize the area, we'd have to require changes occur. But I, I would feel, I just don't feel like we would, we're in a position to go back to them because they've done what we asked them to do. I understand what you mean. There's a, there's a possibility that lacrosse or some other program could come into play in the future. Uh, and I think at that point, that's when we deal with it. It's just from my perspective. Because again, that wasn't raised at the time. Uh, they did accommodate the full-size soccer field. I don't know how large a lacrosse field is.
It's, it's big, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, I don't know.
It, it's basically the same size, maybe a bit bigger than, um, the football field, not football and soccer. I've seen it, most places they use football field. And it's pretty much the entire hundred yards, uh, that is used. So, um, that's, that's, yeah, as I said, my, my thought process is why do we have two fences? Why is there a need for two, for a second fence? That being, the second fence being the permanent fence. If you have a security area, and I know what you've said.
The first fence is the permanent fence. The second fence would be the temporary.
Okay.
From, from the perspective of the discussion that we had when, when they were here.
Mm-hmm. Okay. As I say, all I'm asking for is, uh, just to think it through again and see if we really need to have both fences there.
Can I, can I interrupt for a second, Derek?
Yes.
Who, who do you represent?
Me.
Okay. That clarifies a lot of the fog that I've got. Because you're also on the planning board.
Correct.
And since you're representing yourself, shouldn't this have gone back to the planning board?
Well, I'm assuming you brought that up at the planning board. Maybe that's not.
I, 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 this is all, I've been developed, or this has gone, uh, kind of preparation since the last planning board meeting. I have spoken, um, to Sarah about, you know, about it. And, you know, it, it was advised that I come to see you as a board, uh, as an individual.
I think the permanent versus temporary fencing is not real. I think the planning board decided, or Scott, the chairman, had decided that it wasn't within their, basically within their jurisdiction to require the permanent versus the temporary, was my understanding. So that's why I think when it came up, I think it was mentioned that it was more of a select board issue about the management of the town property is that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, oh, okay, but I, I, I guess I'm still confused as to what his role in the whole, Kim Komodo did. Because, again, I thought it was an issue. That we were all sentenced for this, what was permanent, what was temporary, and what the hell we do here to management. To correct that or, or enhance it. And I, and I, I fail to see the direction that we need to go in. Or that we're asking to go in.
If I understand Richard correctly, what he's, what he's asking for is that the, the area that's permanently fenced and projected to be temporarily fenced for the removal for snow, that that entire area be, be encompassed by temporary fencing. And, oh, my.
I'm sorry.
And, no? Yeah, I'll check. Uh, and, and my thought is in line with yours that, that we had reached an agreement with Swansea Kelruck and they gave us what we asked for. And I think what Richard's asking us to do is to reconsider that.
And I, and I, and I agree that that. And I, and I, and I agree that that's what he wants, but I disagree the fact that we need to make a decision.
We don't have to, we just, he's just asking us to reconsider.
Yep.
In the, in the recent, I'm sorry, and the reason for that is that, and as I mentioned before, I take it on myself for not recognizing what was being presented to us as far as, when they put out that, with that twenty, 220-foot arc, that it didn't dawn on me, that that has got to be temporary fencing. And we, we would have temporary fencing from the left field line of West Field all the way over to the right field line on O'Brien. Which, in, in which case, you would have a secured field without having to do permanent fencing, without, you know, thus restricting any potential future use. That's, that's my only point.
Sly, have you got any?
No, I, I think the issues that were raised, you know, where we wanted at least, I think it was eighty or ninety feet opening for the sledding. And then they came up with a hundred and forty feet of temporary fence. And I think they met, you know, what we had asked for, so that the kids could slide there. And then Ashley was able to get the soccer field in there instead of going across the other way.
But he, he been out there.
And added more.
Have you, like, have you gone out there to see our state?
I haven't seen the states, but I know there's gonna be some excavation in that back corner to flatten it out.
Not a lot of tree removal.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Because the other option was to have temporary fencing in the middle,
Mm-hmm.
have one big soccer field and not have at least one of these other ones, maybe two.
Well, you still have temporary fencing.
The initial plan. Right, but we were just gonna have one soccer field across the path.
Right, but it wasn't, yeah, what I'm saying is you still have temporary fencing from the dugouts out.
Yeah.
The other, if that's, if that's, I have one other question, if I may. What prompted the need for a second opinion on the government use clause that resulted in grant, basically granting Cal Ripken organization government status as far as, I, but against the board or the town is concerned, without any budgetary commitment from the town? It is not a town, it is not a government organization. But I'm, I'm just curious, is what prompted to get the second opinion? Because the first one was submitted to our, for the town's lawyer, legal services, and that was back in August. And a month and a half later, almost two months later, the second request went out, and this went to the state. And we have two different opinions. And I guess, which way is the select board leaning?
I think we erred on the side of the most public input by running it through the planning board, right? I mean.
It hasn't been run through the planning board.
I thought it was.
This project hasn't been through?
No, I'm, I'm talking about. Well, the planning board wouldn't have an opinion on this. This is us having an opinion whether or not this project needed to go to the planning board. That's what we asked for, because we had a contract, it's town land, we had a contract with somebody that's running a program on it. So there was some consideration that maybe they didn't have to go to the planning board as the town doesn't. But we erred on the side of more public input to have it go through the planning board.
Okay.
And even, I believe both opinions between the lawyer and the state were different. They couldn't really come up with a cut and dry answer to it.
Yeah, because your, the town legal advisor stated that any, under two A, any use of a government, of government land other than a government organization has to go before the planning board. And I just wanna ascertain, is that your position as the Board of Selectmen? That anything involving, uh, laying field now still comes, comes before the planning board, or goes before the planning board? Or is the planning board being removed from any advisory position on this?
No, they were, as Sly mentioned, we, we encouraged that type of review, that the planning board would be engaged on an advisory basis as the zoning board for, for different municipal uses, when, when necessary. But technically, we, in the past, the, the town and, and other towns as well have, have not observed that process and have simply gone ahead and done whatever project they wanted to do. But we've taken the approach that those should be run through the zoning board if, if needed, and the planning board to, to get additional viewpoint. And I, I think that's what the planning board did. I think they, they, it through, I think it was in part through the, the work that was done by the planning board during the initial public meeting, public hearing, that provided the genesis for this change of the original plan, which had permanent fencing around, around the entire field. And I, I think the compromise, as Ken said, we, we felt that the compromise was, was worthwhile and we went with it. But in part, it was due to the advisory law of the planning board.
Okay. Again, but what prompted the request for a second opinion?
There was some concern on the, on the part of the board that the, that decision was relevant in specific to Swansea Cal Ripken. And that if, if the board didn't seek an additional opinion, that it could potentially constrain the other, other governmental functions moving forward. And, and really, the, the distinction is whether the planning board had a regulatory role or an advisory role. And we felt that since we had a contractual, I mean contractual relationship with Swansea Cal Ripken as an organization which was providing a service that the town was not in a position to provide, that they came under the municipal law, or the municipal.
That's a governmental use.
Governmental use. Because frankly, they are providing a service that we don't provide.
Any longer? If you're going way back.
Way back, we might have.
Yes.
But, I don't mean, I didn't. We, we might have, but, but we, we certainly haven't in, in the more recent few, more recent past. And I, I personally, I look at what they've done, and there's no way this town would have ever, ever supported the financial improvements that, that they brought to the field on behalf of the town. And we, and we benefit by that. So, again, as Sly mentioned, we, we've got a contractual arrangement with them, and they're providing a service that we don't provide and have no plans to provide.
But again, it's not a budgetary obligation of the town, correct?
Well, we have.
Recreation is.
Yeah, recreation.
Department of Recreation.
And DPW does some, does some work there. We don't, we don't generate any money off of the contract. It's a, it's a services contract.
And the town doesn't sponsor, budgetary-wise, any part of that organization, correct?
Not of the organization, but we do of the fields.
Correct, that's, that was part of the covenants of the granting to the town the, the land. And the fact that it had to be used for recreation specifically. But again, Cal Ripken is not in any, in any way an agent of the town. It provides a service to the town under, under a lease agreement to provide the town to use the field.
They are providing a, you, they are providing a service that we're not in a position to provide.
But I'm still confused as to how that becomes a government entity.
Governmental use versus a government entity.
You want a government?
Governmental use of municipal.
Right, but under governmental use, it is, it says, any, any use of governmental that is not part of a state university system, a town organization, or anything like that, has to go through site plan reviews with the planning board. And your first, your first interpretation, your first response from the legal service for the town said, that is correct. And then the state, you submitted a second request to the state. And that one was completely contrary to the initial response.
To be clear, it's the New Hampshire Municipal Association, so it's not the state, so it's the legal enforcement. We do that routinely.
Oh, I think we granted.
We get a free opinion and, and a paid-for opinion, and sometimes they differ. Ideally, they agree, sometimes they differ. Then you gotta weigh the pros and the cons, and I just don't wanna speak for counsel who gave the other opinion, but I think he would say it was a difficult, it was a close decision. It kinda, he was weighing the balance of time of year that they use it versus, you know, a lot of the year, it's just passive recreation, you know, there's no organized activities, you know, basically from now until next spring, there's no real organized activities there. So it's, it's a reasonable debate, we may not agree, but the board's position right now is that it's a governmental use. But we, but we still value and will continue to value the planning board's input. You guys made this a better project, so you should, you know, be commended for that.
We, um, as far as I'm, as far as I'm in hearing, is that the planning board will still have review of this, it's not compliance, but a site plan review because of the change of the temporary fencing from a proposed fence that was initially on the plan?
I believe it's been approved, approved, my understanding from Sarah, I don't believe it's, I don't believe there's an expectation that's in the back of the planning board's mind.
I think, I think they, they're expecting it.
You think who's expecting it?
Uh, the planning board. I believe it's that they are expecting to be able to review.
I believe they have a compliance from you here.
Oh, compliant, no, I'm not talking about, yes, compliance we already have, but it's, it's the, you know, it's the final changes, make sure that those are on the plan, et cetera.
Oh, on the plan.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have Michael talk to Sarah about that, but.
Yeah, we appreciate your time.
Oh, we appreciate it. Thank you, Richard.
Trying not to make you sick.
See you next time. It's my, it's my own flat. I appreciate it. Thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Go back to the state and work.
Okay. Sewer operation contract, super, I'm sorry, yes, sewer operation contract.
So as the board is aware, Scott itself, the chief operator for the sewer plant, has been looking forward to retiring. He stayed, agreed to stay on a little bit longer than planned, which is greatly appreciated. Basically, there aren't, there aren't a lot of people that wanna work as a municipal employee at a wastewater treatment plant. We did have a couple prospects, but ultimately, even, you know, even hiring an employee, there's still, there's 365, 24/7 obligations. And the commission and DPW and myself all ultimately feel that, at least at this point, till we kinda get through the transition from, from Scott retiring, you know, we're not gonna find another Scott, unfortunately, that lives right over there and is as available as he's been. So we'd like to go with the contracted route. We've got the proposal from WSO Plus that we can essentially fund with the existing budget. The rates do need to be looked at for the sewer system, something Joe and the commission and I are gonna work on. The commission's expiring, we had the article last year, they're expiring a town meeting of 2023, so it's kind of a little bit of a gray area. So they voted in favor of it. We're asking the select board to vote in favor of the contract as well and authorize me to sign it for a term ending, another correction in the motions, Beverly, December 31, 2023.
Let's make sure she knows where that correction came.
Ken, Ken found that correction, sent it to me.
God, what?
She went up to go.
I did?
He said constantly.
Do we review the contract?
You do have a copy there, I mean, I.
Is that in here?
Yes, it is. So it's gone through, it just, just came hot off the presses around three o'clock from Joe. Went through, Cordell reviewed it, Primex gave me a few comments. They don't fully cover it, because if there was some kind of a, like environmental leak or issue, it's not something that's covered by a Primex contract. So they were a little leery to provide input, but they did just give some general comments. Both noted that it's pretty favorable for the town.
Some training in there for.
Some training, so we are looking at, looking at, have a couple of existing employees kinda supplementing, and maybe down the road, we can go back to having employees, it's definitely possible, so.
So who would find the, the weekend coverage?
We have.
We do?
Yep.
We have weekend, but we, we don't have weekend.
Existing, exist employees, yeah. So it'll be, if, if they're ready to provide the service, they provide the service, and we save money, if not, they'll cover it. So it's kind of a, kind of a current option.
So the, is it the on-call third, that's the type of service?
There's the on-call aspect, but it's mainly that every day at a certain time, they basically have to run the same tests to show consistently.
So they're onsite every day? And then is that what happens on the weekends?
Yeah.
Somebody else to do that?
So eight AM or whatever time, every day, Christmas, Thanksgiving, whatever, every day.
But then the old important mowing.
That might get, mowing and plowing is just gonna get incorporated in DPW.
Well, I know we were struggling to find someone or.
Yes.
Some entity. So are we gonna, this is for a year?
Correct.
So are we gonna, thirteen months, thirteen, is it thirteen months?
Yes.
Thirteen months.
Yeah.
Oh. I guess you better get, Richard, no sense, wait until the last minute. Okay. Great.
And we'll continue to monitor how it's working, and when the year's up, we can either just resign, do RFP, accept other proposals. We did review another contracted operation, it was significantly expensive.
Well, we shall still be executive assistant or?
Yep, that position is still, still budgeted.
Be this thing?
That will be the same, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Senator, segment.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
So the rates are gonna be, are we gonna be looking at that anytime soon?
Uh, yes, yeah, it needs to be reviewed. We don't have a set date for that, but yes, they do need to be reviewed, especially about west.
We don't have jurisdiction over, nor do we, we do?
Yep.
Costs.
I mean, yeah, basically, it's what Keen charges you plus, but.
I thought you were separate.
Recent.
We're water. Just for the water?
Now you can add precinct commissioner to your list of honoraries.
Oh, great. That resume of yours, Ken, is gonna be five pages, just on the, all the different functions of that. Hopefully somebody reads it.
Who? Him too.
Dick? Careful. Harry, wait, come after me. December meeting scheduled?
So basically, you know, based on where Christmas falls, I'm proposing at least having a brief meeting every week in December, you know, long story short. Twenty eighth should be able to be pretty brief, just we have like, you know, year-end encumbrances and money to carry over. Basically, for every Wednesday, suggesting.
What, this is Christmas this year?
Sunday, I believe.
Oh, okay.
So we've observed the Monday.
Yeah. And there's only four weeks this year?
Correct? Cause we had five Wednesdays and. Gooden was early.
Yeah, it is, or it was, yeah. That's right, it passed. Still have a bag, bag of turkey. Dinner's tonight?
Better than being a turkey.
I know that. I see that every morning in the marines. So just consensus or?
Consensus, yeah.
All right. Be good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna update the board on old business that being a meeting with the Lucio Cheshire County ambulance that we talked about last meeting is scheduled for next week. So both parties have confirmed and the fire chief. So we'll have that meeting as discussed, just to make sure everyone's on the same page on, you know, what our operations are and how the county, now that they're coming on board and operating more fully, and what that, what that means for operations, basically, just make sure everyone's, everyone's in the same room and on the same page.
Next Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Evening.
Evening.
Yes, six o'clock.
Would you rather at nine in the morning?
No, but I.
Careful now.
I, I, I would suggest that we not load up the evening with extraneous materials if we're going to discuss the, the ambulance situation in depth.
Okay, that makes sense to me. You're, you're looking at the gentleman to your left, he's the one.
Well, I'm looking at the chairman, who is working with the gentleman to my left to expound upon the, you know.
All right, so we've got the first half hour covered, and then everything else is the?
Just for Ken's free-falling discussion.
So, do you all have questions or that you're gonna wanna ask of either Delusio or, or the county? I just wanna make sure that we have a productive meeting. What are we, what are we hoping to accomplish?
I have a question.
Okay, let's see, they're open to working together. Worked well last year, well, I guess it was this year, went twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
I mean, essentially, we have the county that's coming on board, that's, you know, come and met with this board before, has met with me a few times, and just, they're here, they're saying, you know, we're here, we're gonna be operating, we're ready to help, and I guess just hammering out, making sure everyone's on the same page of what that means, you know, we're fortunate to have them in our community, which is great. But, you know, there, it's not every day a new ambulance kind of entity starts up, so I think it's good to make sure everyone knows, you know, priorities, who's first, second, third, where they fall in the, in the pecking order, if they go, if they go on a call, is there a bill, or are they just gonna go with the client? So, I mean, just kinda those, those level of details, I don't, I think to Sly's point, everyone, everyone seems like they all wanna work together, which is great, just making sure there's no miscommunications and misunderstandings.
And in line with that, I, I brought up a couple of weeks ago, the idea of having a committee formed that would study and provide data for us with regard to our current services. The main reason I'm asking that we consider that is, I think I was pretty clear with, with the chief with regard to substantiating the need for the existing ambulance in terms of when it needs to be replaced, as well as any, any discussion for a second ambulance. Sly, I think you expressed quite openly how you'd like to see the department move forward, and for, for me, I'd like to know what, what the true effect is on the community by having the, the service that we're currently providing. I'd also like to have that committee look into billing and determining whether there's some additional monies that could come in from that, and basically just give us the information to be able to make a decision in line with what you'd like to have discussed, so that we're not just throwing something out there that we've, we've got the data to support it. So, I'm just thinking of, given all the committees that, that we've all been on, a small committee of maybe five people that would be charged, we'd have to come up with an appropriate charge, and hopefully, they could put that information together in four to six months, give the board, or less, whatever. I, I don't know how much is gonna be expounded.
By the end of the year.
By the end of twenty twenty-three. Wouldn't be the end of this year, so I'm just looking for support from you guys.
Yep.
With regard to that, or what, and whatever thoughts you might have on it to expound on that, on that committee. Want some time to think about it?
Of course.
All right, well, I'd like to be able to at least get this moving forward before the end of the year, if we, and I think our, our discussion, as you mentioned, I don't know, let me go to paraphrase it, cause I can't remember it exactly, but basically, a thorough discussion of emergency ambulance service. I get a sense that you're, you're well-prepared, which is good. So, all right, anything else?
I can serve on the church.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Do we have any non-publics?
I don't have any, no.
Motion, Richard?
Yes, Greg.
All in favor?
Five.
Thanks, guys.